Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Tuesday, October 4th, 2022, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am John Hastings, attending on Zoom, also present our Commissioners Luke Amit, Amelia Boyd, Ben McGrann. Absent this evening are Commissioners Most Uncle Slate Camp and Nick Palito. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to those of you in the room to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, I will just add a brief announcement that the AV in the council chambers is being updated. And currently, you get best acoustics in the back of the room. There are also some listening devices. And if there's people in the meeting room at future meetings, we'll go over that in more detail. Are there any other general announcements from Commissioners or from city staff?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make an announcement. Our boys soccer teams play in the city at 7:00 PM. They're undefeated. This is their last home game of the season at Memorial Stadium.
Regular season, yes. I've reft a couple of their games. They're very good. Alrighty. Any other general announcements? If not, the first item of business on the agenda is approval of the meetings from the last minute. I was absent at that meeting, so I'll entertain a motion from anybody to approve those minutes. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty. So for old business, the last item on the agenda is a discussion of input received from an online survey for the Comprehensive Plan Update, specifically regarding the vision statements and discussion of upcoming workshops. I will now yield the floor to City Planner Amy Twetton to lead us in this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this was a survey we undertook because there was such a lag in the time that the plan process started and there was a lot of engagement. Just to reaffirm whether the vision statements that had been come up, had been developed with the first round still reflected what the community saw as a vision. The, we did an online survey from August 18th to September 2nd. We received 202 responses and overall, the result of 72% of yes was that the general statement does reflect the aspirations and that general statement is "The city of Sandpoint celebrates our local culture, character, and connections with our scenic surroundings and cultivates a vibrant community for generations to come." We did also get a lot of comments on the survey and some even people that agreed with it did make suggestions on how it could maybe be a stronger statement. Some of those were to include traditions, history, sustainable, local economy, access, environment, and ecosystem, and to use more action words in addition to celebrating such as protecting, preserving value, value or support. And at the end of this presentation, I'll just kind of throw out some maybe possible tweaks to it based on input. Otherwise, we can just go with what we have. The next question was about businesses and interacting with businesses and nonprofit organizations. A diverse mix of businesses and nonprofit organizations benefit from the quality education, versatile workforce, fair taxes, sensible regulation, and reliable connections to the region and the world. And then there's four subcategories of that. This question received an agreement of 76%, 7% were neutral, and 16% disagreed. This incorporates workforce training, the year-round economy, education, and then diverse and affordable housing. And a lot of the comments we received were a lot of these things are really outside of the city's control, you know, complete control to impact. But again, these are very broad vision statements. These are ideals that the community wants to reach.
So, could I ask a question on that before we proceed? Do you have any examples of the kind of disagree statements from that 16%? What part of that they weren't in agreement with?
That, the main one was is these are just two, you know, they're nice statements, but they don't really accomplish anything. But that's a vision statement doesn't accomplish anything. That's, it's that broad base. So it was just, it was more I think the point being that it's outside of our control to accomplish these things. So it's not really, I don't know if they were saying they weren't valid statements, but they just.
Gotcha.
That's, that's what I would say the comments were. Not that we, I don't think that anyone disagrees with any statements, just more how achievable really is it? Or are we just saying things that sound nice?
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Amy, could I make a comment? I think I've lost control of the video, so I can't zoom into staff, but John and attendees online. John, it seems like you can still hear us.
I can still hear you fine, yes.
The conference interfaces?
I, I can still see the meeting room camera.
Okay, so apologies to anyone on Zoom. I can't zoom into staff tables on the dais though.
Okay. Is there anyone on Zoom, Sarah?
There is one attendee.
But they should be okay?
If you can hear me on Zoom, attendee, could you please raise your hand? Okay, thank you. They raised their hand. So I believe it's still projecting, just the video may not be following correctly.
Okay.
Just wanted to make that comment. Alright, thank you.
Let's see. The next question or next vision state and broad vision statement development should be based on principles that assure good stewardship of resources and responsible outcomes relative to the built and natural environment. Again, 83% agreed, 8% were neutral, and 10% disagreed. Development should provide connections among people through a diverse mix of housing, walkable and bikeable neighborhoods that are safe and secure, ready access to recreational facilities and public spaces, and robust street and digital infrastructure. Again, this is connectivity, neighborhood design, and then the multimodal aspects of the community. 78% in agreement, 7% neutral, 15% disagree. The Sandpoint, the Sandpoint community should be inspired to create experience and support our history, social events, recreational pursuits, and art of all kinds. Again, this is, there's a, the discussion of community character in the, in the comprehensive plan talks a lot about being in our town and access to parks and recreation. 77% agree, 9% were neutral, and 14% disagree. And then just based on that first slide of some of the words that people suggested as making it a stronger statement. If you look back at the initial statement, it says, "The city of Sandpoint celebrates our local culture, character, and connections with our scenic surroundings and cultivates a vibrant community for generations to come." So it could either be, is it the city of Sandpoint, Sandpoint, Sandpoint community, or Sandpoint is a community that? So just, these are just three kind of, just to put out there. The Sandpoint community, does it support or does it value and celebrate? It just celebrate as a vision statement is pretty not, it's not very active. I don't know. But so that those were some of the words that people had suggested to make it a stronger statement. So if you did something like Sandpoint Community or the city of Sandpoint values and celebrates our local history, character, and high-quality natural environment while cultivating a vibrant. And then there was discussion of the need to talk about resiliency or adaptability or sustainability. So one of those words, "Community for generations to come," or "Sandpoint celebrates our local culture, history, and connections to our scenic surroundings while cultivating a vibrant community that sustains a healthy and safe environment for future generations." Or "Sandpoint is a community that highly values our local culture, character, and connections to our outstanding natural resources and works with intention to create a vibrant community for generations to come." Just some, based, based on the feedback that we got, I just created those versions.
I like the idea of the Sandpoint community. I think that there's a lot of people who identify with Sandpoint, but not mostly be directly in Sandpoint. And so I think that that creates more of an all-inclusive environment by being a little bit broader there. And I like, I like one. And I think you can take your pick of the words that are added in there, but I like one. I think that's a good adaptation of the comments.
One that, one that came to mind to me along the same idea would be perhaps if it were to say something like the Sandpoint community and their representative government, meaning that it's both the people themselves, but also the city of Sandpoint and those people working for it.
I think that's a good idea. It just becomes a point one, when does it become too wordy?
Correct. I agree.
As a observation, there's an awful lot of people within our greater standpoint area that struggle to understand whether they are in the county, whether they are in Ponderay, whether they are in Dover. And the city of Sandpoint Comprehensive Plan is a legal document. So, and there's, there's many people of very strong opinions as they've invested potentially generations into our community. I would advocate as much clarity as possible to this plan. So people understand that there are boundaries to it. There are left and right limits to what this impacts. Because with land use planning specifically, people often get confused. So I think if we can start off with our vision statement to a certain degree that provides some understanding of that, it may help us as we prepare and plan for the future.
And you're right, it is a city comprehensive plan. So saying the city of Sandpoint, I think some people, when you say the city of Sandpoint, they think it's just the government. They don't think of it as being people. But I, your, your point is very well taken, is that we get calls every day. Oh yeah, I have to build, I mean, I'm in Sandpoint and building a pole barn and, well, they're not actually in Sandpoint. They do have an address.
I think the chairman's response about the elected representatives does provide some of that clarity because that puts some of that boundaries to it. So there's a significant value in putting as much clarity into the initial vision statement as possible so that it shows who is impacted. And also who, to a certain extent, has a standing within this.
And I have a point of clarification too on the process right now. And is that I noticed this evening's agenda is listed as discussion. As far as any concrete changes that would come to this vision statement are those things that would be voted on on a future date, not that would be voted on this evening.
Right, yeah, you would just give direction. And when we come back with, we, I think it's chapter two is community vision. And the commission had some suggestions on that chapter, like one of them was that graphic, the graphic we had of what came first? Was it responsive government or was it local economy? So I've asked the consultants to kind of tweak that. So that chapter will be coming back. And that's when we would kind of revisit this whole whether, whether we keep the, you know, what was in the survey? Because, you know, again, it did 72% were either strongly, or no, this was a yes or no question. So 72% felt it did reflect it. But it is true, it doesn't talk about history. And that, that is, I mean, culture is history, but it's, is culture and history more important than culture and character? What is character exactly? So we will, you know, we're not making any decisions tonight. It is more just if you think we should go with what was in the survey or potentially, you know, make some additions or clarifications.
Yeah, I think that looking at it maybe in the broader context of the overall, that chapter might help make a decision on it. But I do think that if we take into account the discussion here and we have the original versus what the proposed are, and we look at it holistically and in the context of that chapter, then maybe it'll be an easier decision to give specific direction on.
And some of those proposed wordings that you had, were people there in the, in the meeting? Were you able to see that? I was not able to see that here. I don't know if that's anything that was coming up or not.
Yeah, that was on the slideshow.
Okay, at this point, gotcha. Okay.
And again, you are a small body tonight. So we definitely want the full commission to weigh in.
I do like, I do like the idea that it come out from some of those surveys of, of action words and so that there is so that does guide our action and so that it's not, as some people had said, just kind of a flowery statement of, of overall vision, but actually has some, some guidance behind it in terms of the actions that, that we take.
Did anyone else have any other questions or discussion on other other parts of the survey?
Could I get you to go to the slide that started with a diverse mix of business, please?
This one.
Yes, on bullet point four, I'd like to bring up as a topic of discussion, the word facilitated versus prioritized. Facilitated is to make easier. I've been having some interesting conversations with people around our community within the workforce. They are struggling to be able to stay. And they're younger than I am, family people. I would personally, I prefer seeing prioritize, meaning that this is something that the city and the commission are going to move within the legal bounds forward versus just making easier. We're talking about action words, prioritization of affordable quality and diverse housing options. I think it's something to be considered. If it is a focus.
And your word was prioritized?
Yes, ma'am.
And again, not wanting to get too wordy, but it, the other thing I'm thinking about that is that it might be nice if if both, both words are in there, both prioritized and facilitated, meaning as we see what's going forward with some of those public-private partnerships that might be starting to blossom, that we actually want to encourage that sort of thing in order to get a more diverse and affordable housing. So maybe it's prioritize and facilitate the process to get more affordable, diverse housing.
Right, because in some ways facilitated is what we can do. So that to me says, you need to look at your codes. What, what, what are in your codes that are making housing more costly? Or, but if it's just prioritized, I don't, but having both words is fine.
Coding is one part of that, but, but I also do see that need for public-private partnership is something else.
That might be another work. There might be another action where I think about, because it should be explored. No, not explored, because that is a public-private partnership that's explored.
Right. And I don't think we want that word in there. Yeah, I'm not saying public-private partnership should be in there. I'm just saying that that's the sort of thing that we might be working towards. And there's other options as well.
Right, regional housing authorities, things like that.
Correct.
Any other questions on that? It was, it was good to see that we had pretty high agreement rate. And, you know, I think, I think Jennifer would say if our dog park survey will probably get a lot of respondents, but 200 really wasn't a bad response for the survey.
Was this all residents of Sandpoint or was it, it was broader?
It was broader. And we had, we have, we had that broken down.
Okay.
Whether they were resident or non-resident, whether they owned property, whether they worked, you know, so kind of the demographics of it. And there, there's all kinds of data you can pull out. It's just, I sent all the the raw data to Logan Simpson. I don't know how much effort we really want to get into to see, you know, the demographics of the respondents, since we really were just reaffirming what had already been without.
Okay.
So so that's all I have on this. But again, it'll come back with the full vision chapter. And then I just wanted to give you some updates on upcoming comprehensive plan meetings on October 18th and two week, two weeks. I'm hoping to have Miriam here to go over a draft of the jobs and economic development as well as the natural resources and hazards chapters. And a minimum, we'll do one of those, if not both of them. The housing and neighborhoods, public workshops, I have tentatively scheduled those for Wednesday and Thursday, October 26th and 27th. Those are going to be an open house format. Likely in this room, I just have to confirm that. So it is going to be just people can come. It's not going to be, you have to come for a presentation. It's going to be more open house. We'll have mapping exercises. Because again, this is the area that touch, you know, we know people are very touchy when something comes close to their home. So talking about density, what, what are our existing regulations on height design standards uses? What, what does that mean? What is it possible that could happen today? And maybe not an intended consequence, neighborhood character. There's a lot of talk about that in the content. How do you really define that? And how do we balance that with the need for housing? How do we get in fill housing? And try to get to yes, in my backyard versus not in my backyard every time? What are people truly, truly concerned about? And then a visual preference ranking on different kinds of housing, duplexes, townhouses, multifamily cottage housing, accessory dwelling units, and, and using a lot of local photos of what's here already that people perhaps like or don't like. And then I really wanted to ask the commissioners coming out of this, because you're the ones that are, you know, you're facing the public when they don't like something. Are there some questions during this workshop that you would like? I mean, I can put on my planner hat and come up with it, but you as the ones that are facing the public and the public concerns, are there questions you would like us to get at through this workshop? And you can't think of it now, but you think of it between now and then, just, you know, let me know.
Is there going to be anything on the future land use map and the discussion of the ACI that is ongoing with the county?
There will be, but not at this workshop. This is strictly housing and neighborhoods. And that one I hope to have in mid, it'll either be mid-November or the first week of December is we'll do the land use and growth.
I was saying that one could make people either happy or grumpy.
Try to get them between the holidays? I don't know. But I do know, having got, you know, Halloween, right around Halloween workshops work so really well, because there's always candy available.
What, what time do you think these meetings are going to be at?
I think they're going to be pretty much all day. I think it'll be like from one o'clock till six o'clock or like one to eight. And then maybe I'll start a little later in the afternoon, the second, but that try to get it so that people have an opportunity either over their lunch or in the evening to come and participate.
And what's the, how are we promoting this? Is it?
We will do press releases. We'll have it on Facebook. We'll have it on the city website. We'll have it on Engage Sandpoint. We'll try to get the word out is, well, maybe we'll put posters out, but we'll try to get the word out as much as possible.
Candy, candy provided.
And I may ask some of you to come and just kind of be here, you know, we'll try to stagger you so we don't have a quorum at any one time. But just so you can be here to listen and answer questions if people have them. But I and or Sarah will be here throughout.
I've got, when you ask, you know, questions that might help us, I don't know exactly where this piece of information might lead, but I know that in some of the more contentious decisions that we've seen, it quite often is because people were not aware of how their neighborhood was zoned. And I would think it'd be interesting to know if people know what the neighborhood their home is located in, that it's zoned for multifamily, or if it's zoned for anything else. And again, I don't know what we'd do with that, but I know that that's kind of been just to make them aware of how their current, current zoning in their neighborhoods are if they aren't already.
Right. Yeah, and having, having those zoning maps and having kind of visuals of this is how tall a building is allowed to be currently, you know, a single-family house in a multiple-family district can be 35 feet or 40 feet. But we're going to restrict. But we're going to restrict a three unit building to whatever it's next to. It just, I don't know if I want to get into that level of detail. Kind of show them a picture of here's a two story house, next door, one story house. Does this look bad? Or does this look okay? But yeah, definitely the zoning. Because the input we get will inform not just the plan, but also what we do to update the code. And the future, the future land use map and then the zoning map.
I think to that last point, it might be helpful to promote that, that, you know, these, this information is going to inform the plan and the plan is timeline is this.
Well, that is all I had for this evening. Like I said, if, if you think of things or you think there'd be, you know, there's information that we should be including at this workshop that might trigger people thinking, oh, well, how about that? Just let me know.
Okay, do we have, oh, go ahead.
Just clarification. Are you going to have like material out for people to look at?
Yeah. Yeah. We'll have math. We'll have like dot exercise. We'll have zoning maps. We'll have probably aerial photos. So because people love to see where their houses are. So yeah, there'll be a lot of visuals.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, if you have any content that you are planning to share that you could share with us, then maybe that will help trigger to say, hey, it'd be nice to know what people's feelings are on this or based off of what you're planning to present.
Yeah.
I also think it would be helpful too that people understand what right of ownership is. And what, you know, there's a lot of talk about the corner of First and Bridge Street. And, you know, as an owner, there's that right of ownership that you can do things that follow within code and do not have to go to planning and zoning. I think there's a lot of misconception of what we can actually in city council can do. I don't know how that would message would be put across, but I, I hear a lot of comments about how is this allowed? How is the city council voting allowing this? And I don't think they understand right of ownership. And what an owner is, can build because it is their right.
Or, right. And that gets to what, what are the codes currently allow?
Right.
Do people have any idea what they currently, that you can go 65 feet?
Right.
But, but what I got from all the comments from the series, we don't need condos downtown. Like we don't, we can't control who buys and owns property and what, as long as they follow the codes, you know, we can't force them to do affordable housing. So it is, it's just kind of comes with the, it, what was interesting to me was all the comments on the bridge and first development, but they, they were about design, but they were more about the people that would be living there. But nothing about height. So you almost want to ask the question, okay, if there was an affordable housing project downtown, is 65 feet? Okay?
Right.
So it is, is it the character? Is it? The, yeah, it's just.
Yeah, just like one of those cheat sheets or one of those things for dummies, you know, it just tells you, okay, this is what's allowed. If you own something, I don't know. I was just thinking there's a lot of misconceptions out there of what people can do and they don't understand, you know, they want moratoriums and well, people need to understand that you can't do that. Right? Correct?
Correct. So Well, property ownership and property rights are so a fundamental right in the state.
Right.
And our Idaho code doesn't even go as far as to allow municipalities to develop codes that 100% infringe on people's property rights. I mean, that's what the local land use planning act is designed for. Is to sort of be that, that teeter totter so that municipalities don't tip over or governmental entities don't tip over. Private property rights and governing boards have an obligation to protect private property rights. So that, that is a teeter totter balancing act and, and yes, the public needs to understand that this is Idaho and there are still fundamental rights to owning property.
And I, I mean, I just, it's just so, you know, apparent for me, if you were just to have a statement, you know, state of Idaho, people read it, oh, rather than, you know, oh, well, why can't, you know, why is this? Or, I don't know, just educating. I mean, you and I could find that information out if we really cared. I mean, right? But most people don't. They
It's really not unique to here. It's not, but it's also going to be the same individuals who wouldn't want us to tell them no. Right. They want to do a project on their property. Right. So again, it's that balancing act and navigating those relationships. I, I, I am all for educating. I mean, the more we can educate the commission, the council, the public. But again, people will hear what they want to hear also.
Trying to get to what do you want, not what don't you want? Correct.
I know one of the things I have heard from more than one source is the notion that community desires, community norms should overweight the rights of the individual property owner. And that's, I know, but that, and that's not the way, that's not the way it works in Idaho. I don't think that's the way it works hardly anywhere. But, but I've heard that from multiple people.
But the desire of the community is supposed to pour into your comprehensive plan and that requires involvement. And then your comprehensive plan in a perfect world feeds back all of that information that came into it from the public and then gives direction to the commission and the council for establishing your codes. That's the whole purpose of the comprehensive plan. But if you don't have a broad spectrum of your community pouring information in to help develop a comprehensive plan that truly is reflective of a cross section of the community's needs, then, you know, you're missing bits and pieces, but you can't go out and force people to provide information or give input. So you can only rely on the information you get from those who choose to participate. And the first person, the first thing I would ask somebody who complains about what's not being done to protect them is, you know, are you participating? Have you answered the surveys? Are you providing input? Are you coming to the meetings? Are you at least watching them after the fact? They're all published. You know, how are you individual citizen? Why participating in this process? Because now is your opportunity. That's my lecture for the day.
So is what I just turned is maybe we need to have a storyboard that says how to be involved and engaged for the citizenry that hopefully comes.
That would be good.
Yes. I mean, the workshops, the surveys, those are the two really big ways for people to provide input.
Workshop, surveys, hearings.
Hearing, hearing. Yes. Because in the absence of you receiving anything additional to what you have now, you're going to rely on your own opinions because you don't have a really broad cross section providing you input. And maybe you do, but 200 doesn't seem like enough.
Not in a city of 10,000.
Correct. And then it doesn't do any good if the same people who come to the workshop are 100 of the people who answered the survey responses.
Because that's usually what it is. The people that know and are the ones that participate.
Well, it's, it's tough. It's the whole, you do workshops, but your people have to be interested enough to come to your workshop. And that's why we do try to do, you know, we try to piggyback off of events. Sometimes with, you know, like at the farmer's market, having booths or whatever, and we just didn't act together enough to do that this summer. By going where the people are instead of making the people come to you.
Right.
But and, and it is true that getting it out on Facebook, there, there are the, there are people that are going to use social media and people that are. It's a constant challenge.
Yeah. The biggest thing you guys can do is really have a good command of what is a comprehensive plan and what isn't a comprehensive plan. So if you understand what it is and how this visioning document is utilized in city government, that's the best thing you can do to help educate the public. So that they don't think that these sessions are just come and complain about everything under the sun about the city. This really is your vision work and you're going to have vision work on certain topics on different nights. And, you know, some people will be interested in housing and not transportation. Others will love transportation and not housing. So they should participate where their passion is and provide feedback or at least understand. But, but for you guys, boots on the ground, you really having a good command of what the comprehensive plan is so that you can educate the public is the biggest thing you can do to help the process.
Is it possible to put an insert into the utility bill that so many of us receive? That shares when these workshops are? I have no idea.
Usually it's kind of a long lead time, but I'll
Well, but even in the future, if we don't get the October, maybe we get November and an upcoming chapters. And then that's one more method where we reached out to people that receive our services.
Good talk.
Do we have other discussion or questions from commissioners or staff? Are we prepared to wrap this meeting up then?
I'd say so.
Okay. With no further business before the commission, this meeting is now adjourned at 6:12 PM. Thank you all for attending.